About to turn the sign up sheet for anybody that wants to speak that's not on the agenda. For those of you that don't usually attend meetings, this is where you sign up to talk about anything. Anybody that's in here that wants to sign up that hasn't signed up for it, turn it down. Everybody?
Make sure.
You better need an agenda than to get one.
Thirty-five years.
You're gonna get bored and guess.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Last three thousand dollars.
Look how much money you had to do for this. It ain't no fun.
You now make a small fortune in construction. Spend the big ones, start with a large one.
I'd like to call this December 12th, 2017, Meeting of the Macon County Board of Commissioners to Order. This is the first meeting in December, therefore it is our organizational meeting that is called for by the Board of Commissioners, the rules of procedure. The first order of business that we'll take care of right now is I will entertain motions for a chairman.
Mr. Maggi, I make a motion that we re-elect our current chairman, Commissioner Jim Tate, to that chair. He's done a great job leading this board, been faithful, and kept everything in the road, so it's a great pleasure that I nominate Mr. Jim Tate.
I'll second that.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Do we have any discussion? No discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? Mike left the minutes reflect unanimous decision.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate y'all's confidence. Yes, next item is election of vice chairman. Take a nomination for vice chairman.
Like a motion, Ronnie V. O.P., accept to this vice chairman.
We have a second. I'll second nomination for Ronnie for vice chairman. Thank you, gentlemen. Outstanding job last year. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Examination of official bond for public officials of Macon County. I presume that's what we just handed out?
Yes, the resolutions in the package, and these two documents are the bond for the chair and the other ones for the tax collector finance director and researcher fees.
Those documents should be attached to the original resolution. I think they got included with the agenda package.
Any questions? We have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Maggi, I appreciate it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any announcements? I'm hearing lots of crickets. Any announcements?
Push the bell.
Come on.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. All right, we'll pause stand, observe a moment of silence, and I'll ask Commissioner Bill to lead us on the pledge.
As we do have a moment of silence, there's a lot of folks in our community that have experienced devastated losses due to fire. A lot of families have had sudden deaths in their families in the past few days, so if we have a moment of silence to remember those families.
Please join me, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
It's not a public hearing tonight, so we will go right into the public comment period. I have three individuals signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to sign up? I'll give you another opportunity if you don't feel like it once. All right, we're asking you per the instructions on here, and our protocol, we're asking you to try and limit your comments to five minutes, and there's just three of you tonight, so I don't expect it to take too long. But first up is Mr. Lewis Penland. That subject is grading contractors. Welcome, Lewis.
Thank you, Chair. And Lewis?
Thank you all. I'm Lewis Penland, representing Penland Contracting, my family's business. I want to talk to you about the grading proposal for the grading contractors. I talked to Paul Schuler and Denny Ledford, and they wanted them to be here, and they want me to tell y'all that they agreed a hundred percent with everything they read in the document. And we had a discussion, and I'll talk about some of the discussions here in a minute. But first of all, I really want to thank the planning board, and y'all ought to commend them because they have done an excellent job on this document, and I'm very, very impressed with that. Realtor, surveyor, banker, home inspector, attorney, building contractor, electrician, plumber, well driller, septic tank installer, what are all these occupations having common with real estate is they all require some kind of certification or something like that. The only one that does not is the grading contractor, none whatsoever. And with the current system we have, you're rewarding the ones that don't want to comply and are not going to comply, and you're punishing the ones that want to do the right thing, but they can't because, and it's like Denny said, I get so tired of going out there, looking at a project, giving them a price, and somebody else gives them a price much lower, but they haven't taken into account the erosion control, anything like that whatsoever, and they get the job, and then two months later, they get called. Paul Schuler related a story to me, he went out, same thing happened to him, and the guy called him back two months later, and goes out there, there's trees buried in the road, it's falling out, the house place is falling away and everything else, and the guy wants help, but he wants him to do it for what the original guy paid it for. So that's a, that is a real big problem that we have there. And the planning board, when they were discussing this, Tony Schuler brought up an interesting point, I thought. He was talking about when you had the contractors on the website, and he had these clients come in from town, he was highly recommended as a grading contractor, well, they went to your website, and for some reason, he wasn't on the website. Well, they had concerns about it, went back and forth, he did eventually get the job. But what that tells me is, the clients are looking at that website, they're wanting those contractors that they know are educated, they know what they're doing. The, there'll be a discussion, I'm sure, somebody will say the fees are too extravagant, and I have to strongly disagree. I'm gonna give you one example of licensed real estate agent. There's probably roughly a hundred and twenty real estate agents in Macon County today. Their fees annually are about twelve hundred dollars. They have to spend initially upfront two hundred hours in the classroom and eight to ten hours continuing education every year. And one of the largest projects we just recently had in Macon County was the construction of the new Super Ingles. And I happen to be good friends with the general contractor, and he said he had no issues whatsoever to come in and get the contractor's stuff. It's pretty standard to them, they see it a lot in other places they go. The state of Georgia has one of the best programs in the nation right now, and it's a statewide thing, and it's very stringent, I mean, it sets rules, and they've got a lot of teeth in it. I mean, if you, if you don't abide, they'll come after you, they'll shut you down. And I've talked to many contractors down there, and they absolutely love it, they said it finally leveled the playing field for them. Now, everybody's on the same page as far as that goes. And another thing that'll probably be brought up is let's let Raleigh handle it, let's let Raleigh take care of it. Well, my good friend Roger West and I were talking about two or three weeks ago about that, and he spent seven years down there, and he said, and I'm gonna quote him, Raleigh thinks Western North Carolina is Greensboro. So they don't, they're not gonna help us up here, they haven't yet, and they probably want minimal whatsoever, so I don't look for them for help on this part. And one of the biggest things that seemed like all the contractors talking about it at the planning board there was the lack of enforcement, and it just resounded, and that's the same thing that Paul Schuler stated, and Denny Ledford too, and I couldn't agree with him anymore. If you're gonna do this, just enforce it, if you're not gonna enforce it, don't waste the time to go through the procedure. Thank you.
Thank you. How will Jacobs Recycle Centers?
Thank you very much. I would like to thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'd like to also thank any vets that are here that gave their time, so give me time that I could do, I could speak. What I'd like to speak to you about tonight is, I've been a resident of Macon County for sixty-three years. I lived in Nantahala, the most of that time, except for when I lived up at Carr Tucky Jay back in seventy-three, that's whenever Waldoops came out with the water gate bugs, I don't know if you remember that or not, do you? Ray Stevens came up with the streak, that's a good time to live. I've been told, since I've lived in Nantahala, that if you come to Franklin, and if you're gonna ask for anything, it's, you're wasting your time and your money for driving across the mountain. If you ride around Nantahala, look at our recycle centers, look at where we have our community meetings, you'll see what I'm talking about. Andrews side of the mountain has always had the money. The money's always upstairs on this side of the mountain, very little goes across the mountain, and all you gotta do is drive around over there and look. All we want is to be even, things even up over here. We've talked before, and I've talked to this gentleman here, and all I can hear is what can't be done. I want to hear what can be done, what can be changed from the way things have been. Most of the people in Nantahala, a lot of the people that I know, that if they could, they would go from the Tillico Gap to the Warrior Gap and become Cherokee County. We get a little bit more recognition in the paper and everything else in Cherokee County than Franklin Press, we don't get anything in there unless you don't pay your taxes, you get your name in the paper. I'm proud to be an American, I'm proud to be, to live in Macon County, but something's gonna have to change. The old men, better men than me, that died, that lived in Nantahala, said the same thing I'm saying, Hal, you're wasting your breath. Nothing's gonna change, but something needs to change. Our recycling center is right now, it's not been open for three days, it's nothing but snow, the gates are closed, but I guarantee everyone in Franklin is open. Recycle Centers in Nantahala is made up of cross ties, mud, go over and look, you get out and you step in the mud if it's raining, and for winter time, it's snow and ice. Come over to Franklin, you drive across, you've got asphalt, concrete. Was the old man right that lived in Nantahala? Sure he was, 'cause if you go look and see. The money that's spent, if you weigh it in the balance, commissioners, y'all been found wanting. We don't want to know what can't be done, we want to know what can be done. Got those ball fields out here that's built down at the, behind that church out there, whatever, millions of dollars, and what I can understand, it's way over budget. The old men and women in Nantahala, those ball fields ain't gonna do them no good. Those people that's barely making it now, paying their taxes, paying for a ball field. More spent down there, up keeps the spending down in Hala, our community building. When you come out of it at midnight, better have your flashlight, 'cause I came out the other night, forgot the steps is there, and I almost fell, broke my back, ain't even no light there to get out. If it's a snowing or raining, Paul knows it, you go over there, you better bring your can if you go to the bathroom, 'cause it's leaking in there, and it's a double wide trailer. Our firehouse over there's a tin can, you can build one over here, it looks like Taj Mahal. Amen? That firehouse looks like a Taj Mahal. Guys, you found wanting. These old people in Nantahala, you'll be ashamed of yourself, spending their tax dollars like that, and they can't even have a good building, it's a double wide trailer. You got any double wides over here, no lights, you get in and out of to have a community meeting? Don't think so. Guys, it's sad, the good people in Nantahala, this man right here told me what can't be done. Brother Paul here seems like he's the only one that we've got a voice over here. Appreciate you, Paul.
I'm not telling you it can't be done.
I'll give you time to speak, give me time to speak. Brother Paul here, he comes over to Nantahala, gives us the facts, but he says it ain't hopeless. Said you need to stand up and represent. We ain't had nobody representing us over there, we need somebody representing us over here, and I shouldn't even have to ask. Good Christian men that walks in and out of the churches, oh, I'm a Christian, pat yourself on the back, well, do the Christian thing, do the right thing. Making Nantahala feel like the chance here. Heavy as the head that wears the crown and spends the taxpayers' money, but remember, number thirty days. God bless you, Merry Christmas.
How will Jacobs?
How will?
How will?
How will?
Any questions? We move on to the next one. Well, I've got Randy, I can't read the last name though. Must be a doctor. Chuck?
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Ladies and gentlemen, we allow to be back over here again, seems like I'm gonna get on permanent over here if things keep going the way they're going. My first question is about this grading license and erosion control. Does Macon County have a major erosion control problem? Can anybody answer that for me?
Depends on what you call it, major?
Well, it seems like if I move a show full of dirt on my property, it's a major problem. I just, I just wanted to run that by. And if we've had a problem, citations been issued, or somebody been logged, and I've never known of anybody being a citation or logged. I had a grading license up to February last year, no one ever asked me to see them or anything, I just came over there and took a test and gave my money, and makes way by to me, so I'm not sure I need a grading license. And how do you solve a problem if you don't have one? I just don't know how to do it, maybe you do. The soils in Macon County are very forgiving, and will heal by themselves rather quickly. And that's proven many, many times, you'll go out and look at Peaks Creek, what happened, and a lot of the big slides on these forest service roads, they heal theirselves. I know you're gonna do some erosion control work, but it seems like we're being penalized before we do anything with this new proposal. This new proposal that Jack Morgan has proposed, it'll be detrimental to property owners in Macon County. I am very concerned to think property owners would have to come to Franklin to take a test to plow their garden, or widen their yard out, or driveway, that's just, we're losing our property rights with that right there, and I'm very strong against that. And to me, the way I've read this thing, it sounds like I had a loved one to die, and I wanted to bury him on my property, I'd have to come to Franklin and take a test before I could dig grave to bury him, and that could take up three or four weeks anyway. That's, that's not good. And wow, what with the cemeteries you're gonna do in this county with this new thing that's proposed. I think all county commissioners members should stop this project right now in its tracks, and see if there's something that Mr. Morgan could do something to be productive for, for the property owners, instead of putting more regulations on us. Washington is cutting regulations every day, and Mr. Morgan seem like he's just trying to add more. It costs taxpayers a lot of money for, for him to grind his own axe at our cost. I'd just like to say, show of hands for people that support this out here. Do I have to show a hand for people that support it? I don't see any. Can I say, show a hand for people that oppose this thing? I thank you for your time, and I hope you'll consider, these property owners, I'm very disturbed about this, and you will not hear the last of me on this, till we get something done. Thank you.
All right, does anyone else that would like to speak? We'll move on to adjustments to and approval of the agenda. Any changes, any additions, Mike? I think you mentioned that eleven A's.
Ms. Foreman will not be here this evening. She asked if she could come in in favor. If you could remove that, please.
Eleven A will be removed. Any other changes or additions? Chester? Lori? Derek? Maybe a first. All right, we get a motion to approve the agenda. A motion. Second, Commissioner Higgins, all in favor? Moving on, old business, twelve A, consideration of work first electing county plan for state fiscal years 2019 through 2022. Welcome, DSS Director Patrick Bettencourt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been asked to keep it short, so I'll do my very best in doing so. We came before you in October and asked you if you would support a plan for us to present to the state, continuation of work first electing plan for Macon County, which we've been doing since sometime in the mid-nineties, if I'm not mistaken. The state was a little slow in getting the request for plan amendments out to us, so we had a compressed timeframe, but we had a welfare meeting this about two weeks ago, in which the proposals to the plan have been made. There's only seven proposals that we are making, changes for the plan that has been approved previously, and those plan recommendations include things like enhancements for addressing teen pregnancy, it addresses utilizing transit system for folks to be able to get to and from work opportunities. It does make a couple of plan revisions that are substantive changes to the plan, and I won't go over every single one of the recommendations, I believe that you should have those plan changes in front of you, along with the highlights of the revisions. What will happen from here is if the board adopts this plan, is we'll send it to the state, it is due to them Friday, so if the board approves tonight, I'll, I'll ask for the chairman's signature this evening if I can. We'll submit that to them electronically, and we'll also send it to them in the mail. The state will then review that plan before sending it on to the General Assembly for approval. They'll also give us feedback on that plan, so if there's any revisions, I'll let the Welfare Reform Committee know what those revisions might be from the state perspective. We've been having conversations with the state on a monthly basis, so we feel like we have a good communication with them, so hopefully there won't be a holdup in their approval. But if I can tonight, I'll ask you to approve the plan with the proposed revisions, and I'll send that on to Raleigh for their review.
Mr. Chairman, as Lee's on to the DSS, you know, we, there's very few work first counties left.
Seven.
There's seven of us left, and we think, and it's always been a prototype state, the other counties just didn't have the wherewithal to move ahead with it. Work first has worked well in Macon County, revisions that are here are minor, and so I'm making motion that we adopt the rest revisions, and, and Mr. Chairman, if you assign the documents, give them the prepared for permission to send on to the state.
A second. A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
License Revisions. Welcome, Planning Committee and Development Director, Mr. Jack Morgan. Welcome, Jack.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, good evening, brother. You hear my name a lot, I guess, about town. I understand we're here to discuss the recommendations by the planning board. Back in August the eighth, this was presented to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration, as in March, the commissioners voted to rescind our grading license program that was not a part of the ordinance, we did. Planning Board asked the, no, I'm sorry, the Board of Commissioners asked the planning board to consider and recommend whether to keep the program, keep the program with modifications, or to do with the program. And in August eighth, the planning board sent this to you for consideration, as in to make changes to the program and to keep it, not as it was, but to make modifications in this one, and this is the recommendation. And Mr. Jones and I, excuse me, went over this quite thoroughly beforehand, not before tonight, but back before we presented it to the Board of Commissioners. So I guess if you got questions, comments, for me, I guess here I am.
I'll fire it off, Jack. We heard testimony in public sessions, night four, and against it. A couple of the things that were mentioned in the against by Mr. Chuck back here, one was that you couldn't do your garden without a grading license, is that true?
I believe agriculture's exempt.
Agriculture's exempt. Can you do your driveway?
If you're just doing maintenance, it's exempt.
Okay. How big of an area did you disturb? If I'm a homeowner and I want to build my son a basketball court in my backyard, can I do that without a grading license?
Well, the ordinance requires, the state model ordinance requires anything over a half acre. Our ordinance doesn't have that statement. If it's more than a half acre, you have to submit a plan. So the implication is, the way I read the ordinance is, that if it's less than a half acre, it would require. Now, there's some other requirements besides the grading license that would be good to consider with the homeowner, like the watershed ordinance, the floodplain ordinance, that could get people in some, some problems with the state and fed people if they don't know about it, and to be honest with you, when they come and talk about the land disturbance law, for me, that's a good time to bring that up, and it's caught some people before they did it, and it's caught some people after they did it. So to answer your question, anything less than a half acre requires, permit, as I read.
Required, permit.
Yes. Now, that's the ordinance, that's not the recommendations by the planning board for the license. That has nothing to do with anything in the sedimentation, erosion control ordinance, except the license requirements to do land disturbance. And it was a suggestion of Mr. Jones, best I remember, Mr. Jones, you correct me if I'm wrong, that this should be not a standalone ordinance, but it should be included in the sedimentation and soil erosion ordinance if it is approved. and soil erosion ordinance if it is approved by you, Jim.
I have a question. And I think I understand it. I just want to, since you've been close to this, the exception. I see it here. And when I read that exception, the first two sentences are fairly clear to me, but the last sentence gets a little blurry. Can you, and it may just be me.
Okay. The, there's just two sentences in that paragraph you're referring to, I assume?
Right. The first two sentences and the last sentence.
All right. The signed affidavit requiring that you're going to own the property and not sell it is what the North Carolina License Board for General Contractors does for anybody who wants to do building on their own property, their building on their property. That's fine, if you want to do that. But you have to sign an affidavit that you're not building with the intent to sell. In other words, you're not trying to go around the license requirements of the state. And that was included in here.
The first sentence versus the last sentence. It talks about the section shall not apply to anyone who is actually performing degrading or land disturbing activity on property they personally own and do not sell. And you went through that.
Yeah.
But it seemed like the last sentence, it kind of contradicts that first.
There's three sentences, I'm sorry, Mr. Jones.
Pardon me, sir?
I'm sorry, there is three sentences. In order to qualify for the exception, the owner must pass the grading contractor land disturbance test, but not be required to pay the hundred dollar fee, nor would there be issued license. This, the planning board felt, would help landowners to understand the ordinance. And I'll be honest with you, the majority of my complaints are not on grading contractors. It's on people that go and work on their own property. And this, we felt, the planning board felt, would at least make them knowledgeable of the laws that were in place in our county.
And I guess I just feel like the first sentence kind of freed the landlord to do what he would prefer because it says this section shall not apply to anyone who is actually performing degrading or land disturbing activity on property they personally own. And they, but then again, in the last sentence, it kind of captured them again. It's not, this is an exception. This section doesn't really have an exception to it. You're still going to have to take the test.
You wouldn't have to be licensed.
Right.
This section requires a license. The exception is an exception to the license requirement.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
If it needs some clarification, tell me what to do.
For benefit of those that were not there ever maybe involved in this process, could you talk to this board just a little bit about the process that the planning board went through prior to you handing it off to Chester, a little bit about that process, please?
Be glad to do that. When it was handed to the planning board, we gave them the old policy we were using that was rescinded, and a copy of the Sedimentation Erosion Control Ordinance. And that was in one meeting. We said, digest this. And the next meeting, we want to discuss this. And I believe that it was the next meeting, we asked Mr. Jones to come to advise us on a few things, to make sure we weren't crossing the legal lines with what we were considering. The next time, we sent out invitations to over a hundred, I guess, licensed grading contractors or people that had been licensed, inviting them to the meeting, telling them that we're going to discuss this, we'd like to hear from them. We got, I think, maybe fifteen, Paul, you were there that night? Maybe fifteen or so people that spoke, and again, some for, some against. And with that, the planning board, at their next meeting, gave a list of bullet points like this. And they said, put it in the ordinance, and just take a look at it, and we'll be done. The planning board said they would be done with it. And that's how it happened. They listened, and we invited, like I said, everybody that wanted to come and discuss it. And the planning board was willing to hear it. I don't know if that's the Cliff Notes version of that or not, but pretty much the way it happened. It didn't happen in the dark, it didn't happen overnight.
Thank you, sir.
Ronnie, any questions?
Well, the subdivision ordinance, of course, I was young when it was put in and along with sedimentation, erosion control, and the grading license, where it originated from, there's people come in, write a track, I always wanted to do a subdivision. And the problem that arose from, not that's going to happen again, but the grading people that I deal with and work with on a daily basis, they like to know that their name's listed as a licensed contractor in Macon County. They think it gives them some more credibility. And you heard Louis speak to that. And that's definitely, and a lot of folks don't understand, like Mr. Shook, you know, you can take it to the extreme, and where people can't do their gardeners or whatever. But I think when people understand this, and I think at the end of the day, the erosion control ordinance is that we pass this, have the water quality in Macon County.
Good.
I know it has. So I appreciate the planning board and their work on this. It's a very small fee, as a general contractor, what I have to pay. I know that. And what I have to do every year, so, and you know, and you, I only think our best resource we've got is our land and our water, so. But I appreciate the planning board's work, Jack, and your work, and everybody's work on the document.
One thing that's not included in this ordinance, or not in ordinance, but in this recommendation that the planning board thought was important, and it was brought up at the meeting where some people spoke, was they would like to be some list of these licensed grading contractors in Macon County and put it on our department's website for people to view. They just asked for that. So if this goes through, I would ask for that. One other thing that has changed that I would recommend since this has been written was... Let me find it again, I thought I had it marked. There's a date on here that if you'd had a license six months prior to that date...
Eighteen months.
Somebody find it, was that it?
Eighteen months.
Eighteen months, wherever that is. I think that should probably be changed to anyone that had a license before. Because when you guys kicked this to us, that was March, and it's been quite a few months. So there's not many people that would qualify for that exemption.
Been twelve years since I aired that.
No. But anyway, that's just my thoughts on that. But again, the, we found people for, and we found people against. But that's fairly common in any situation these days. Anything you bring up is going to stir some controversy of some sort. Ask people, said enforcement, yeah, enforcement's been a problem in the past, I agree. We've been pretty low on staff for a while because the economy was low. The county's not cut any positions, but not filled some when someone left for retirement or whatever. We lived with that, but it might stretch just a little thin. And I've got some good help now. He's sitting back here, Joe, he's assistant to me now, so he's catching a lot of these things as well. But we do have citations out, we've got notice of violations out now. I don't particularly flavor, or find it flavorful, to find somebody for not having a permit. I'd rather them just get one. I think the ordinance is about compliance. And I asked the state boards about that yesterday. I said, well, I feel that that's more important than to find any civil penalty is compliance. And he said, yes, they feel the same way. So that's what my department strives for in this Sedimentation Erosion Control Ordinance. If you want to kick me around for not finding enough people, you can do that. Because I'd rather have them comply.
Everybody through? Here, Jack. I might have made some errors in my response. I'm not in favor of the order, or the chapter. So if you peg me on some stuff, let me know.
Okay.
I just put them down because, yeah, here's the cops, if I want some. Because I get to talk, and I, yeah. There's a couple of things mentioned. Louis had mentioned surveyors, realtors, plumbers. Those people all are required to have state licenses, just like grading contractors are if you perform over a certain level of job. So I don't know what the correlation there was. And then the bottom line of this thing, if you disturb, if you're a landlord and you disturb your property, my, the understanding of the definition, any land disturbing activity that alters the ground cover or topography of that particular property requires a permit, a license, or the administrator approval before the work is done.
Depends on the size.
Don't say that in this.
Not in this, is it what you're talking about?
I'm talking about when this, if this is enacted and amended into the erosion control ordinance.
This doesn't change any of the requirements, other than you're supposed to have a license to get a permit.
Yeah. But in your, but you're talking about land disturbing activities?
Yes.
And in opening A1, it says, all person performing any land disturbing activity, except those excluded specifically by this chapter. Where are the exclusions in this chapter?
This chapter, if you look at the top, we've got 153 with question marks. That's the number of our Sedimentation Land Control Ordinance. I'm sorry for that. If we put in an R, it would be subject to the exceptions of this chapter, which are...
USDA?
Yeah.
Lock-in place?
You know that.
More or less. The only thing that would apply to us would be fruit and vegetable production here locally.
Under 15304A, the undertaking on agricultural land is according to General Statute 113A 521, but not limited to A9 is fruit and vegetable crops.
Yeah.
Is exempt.
Yeah. So that would be home gardens are exempt?
Yes.
But if you want to expand, expand your yard. Say you've got a third of an acre yard, you want to lay down a half acre, you've got a backhoe, and you own that property, and you undertake removing the natural ground cover and planting that back of the grass, just like Jimmy Tate does every day, then that requires one of those three things, right?
I'm not sure it would, Mr. Higgin, because if you're just removing the sod and replacing it with something else, what have you done?
Well, under the definition in the erosion control ordinance, under land disturbing activity... And more do landscapers get into this thing? Are they required to be licensed?
They, if there's landscaping license, that's not regulated by Macon County, that's the state license.
Is there a dollar limit on that?
I'm not sure about that one. You'd have to ask somebody besides me.
It's just like my public utility license, thirty, intermediate. Why I'm taking reading?
The, if I may, Mr. Higgin, not to interrupt you, but I think the defining part of that definition is the very final words, and that may cause or contribute to sedimentation. All right? Where's your yard at? Is it beside a trout stream? Is it beside the water supply from the town of Highlands? Or is it on the head of Calwee down there, where there's not a stream within a mile of it? What sedimentation could you cause, Mr. Higgin?
Water runs downhill.
Well, gravity's still in effect. Yes, it is. No control there. But again, this ordinance requires you to retain all that sedimentation within twenty-five percent of the area disturbed. In other words, if, let's say you disturbed a hundred feet. If you've got natural vegetation, or twenty-five percent of the lint, this is me trying to recall this, then that will retain the sedimentation off of that project. So are self fence required? Probably not, unless there's a stream down there, and it's relatively steep, and it's going to get out of here in a hurry. There are a lot of ways to maintain, and a lot of ways to retain and keep sedimentation without the usual self fence, or the sediment traps, or the drop inlets. There's a lot of ways to do it. You can just do it naturally. You can windrow it with brush. And that's the intent of this ordinance, just keep it out of the water. And off your neighbor. And this ordinance is the state's model ordinance with a couple of modifications by us. And that's it.
And I apologize to everybody in the room for bringing this up. You and I talked, I'm just going through old ordinances to see. This one, I used to be a licensed clearwater contractor. And Louis Penlon and I have worked about this for fifteen years. I'm not anymore because I saw people not being fined. If they were caught doing something out of the ordinary or destroying a piece of property, then just come by and pick up a license, come by and take the chance to get your license. So I quit having my license. I know other people who do not have licenses. And this license, if it's issued, if you want to get a grading license, go to the state and get a grading license. Because this little local license, and you're reading in that, is simply an occupational licensing. In other words, we're going to license people to perform an occupation. That's not our role, that's the state's role to perform occupational license. If enacted, this license is going to be recognized to anybody. No surrounding counties will recognize it. True?
True.
So if it's just a feel-good thing to make a few people feel good because they've got a license, I don't see that as justification to enact a program that didn't really work too well in the first place. And you'll admit it was understated. How many people is it going to take? If this is enacted and set up just like it's designed, how many people will it take to do the record keeping, the testing, the document preservation, and the maintenance? How many people are we talking about?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. I believe it'd be relative to how many permits we've issued, Mr. Higgin. If we, as things are now, we've probably got enough staff with the addition of Joe and Michael Cope as the bill inspector to cover it. But you know, if we go back to the time when we were issuing a hundred residential billing permits a month, I don't know how many it would take.
But that would be something we'd need to, I think, before we enact something, wouldn't that be the cost of the program, cost of...
It would be considerable.
Certainly, I would even consider it on anything, whether it's this or something else.
But I don't know exactly how to come up with that, Mr. Higgin, sorry.
And I agree. I don't know how many it would take either, that's why I was asking. I'm still confused about, I think a homeowner wants to do something on this property, whether it's with a shovel or a backhoe, he's going to have to do. I'm just not convinced yet that he doesn't need to have a license. Because in the exceptions, it clearly states that if you're going to perform land disturbing activities as defined, you get the license, you take the open book test. An open book test?
Well, a lot of people have never seen that ordinance before, until they come to take the test, Mr. Higgin. And they don't have a chance of getting a license that way.
When I went to take my state license, my realtors, my public utilities, I'd never seen the test either. I took the book and studied it for days.
But you knew what to study, you knew the documents to study. These guys coming in for the license, I don't know what the test is.
Can you give them something? I mean, an open book test?
We could prepare something if that be the will of the commissioners to say, this is what the test is going to be about, this is the material you need to study before you come. But the statement, they're going to say, well, I need to do this today because I need to start grading tomorrow.
Why don't we just give them a license? Just put out advertising, tell them it's a local grading license, come by and get it. I mean, in essence, that's what we're doing.
I don't exactly sit that way, but...
And then it's of no value, then you might accept those others in Macon County.
Well, that's true. There has been, and I won't say that this is actually going to happen, but there has been a couple of groups, conservation groups particularly, they're trying to strive for some kind of universal education. I know you know what I'm talking about. Yeah. I don't know how much traction that's ever going to get. But that was the last thing that I thought about that, too. But who knows what will happen in the future, I don't know. So, yeah, well, Macon County, you can't ask the Macon County Planning Board to design a document or to go into ordinance and be as effective anywhere else but Macon County.
So on this one, and I regret that I agreed to go and send it to the planning board. I'm opposed to it, and I'll, you know, and I always appreciate the stimulating discussions. And the thing, in just closing, if now we've got a federal, and a little bit on the state level, but I'm trying to do away with the regulations that are not effective. And in my opinion, this one was not effective for various reasons, whatever. I'm not picking on Jack Morgan, but it was not effective. So if we have the federal and the state guys trying to eliminate regulations, here we are as a local, but we're trying to breathe life into re-impose a regulation. And in my personal opinion, I don't think it's necessary. So with that... So with that, I yield.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm still confused, and I may be confused, but there's a lot of, seem like clouds here that I don't understand the other part that Paul does that you read there, that there's a, um, sometimes we think we can't put a garden down, you can't build a basketball court. Um, I, I think that's not true, if, if you're on the property. Did you say that you had, um, if you're not disturbing over a half acre, you're okay?
Didn't say that.
Okay. Um, the, the, the major thing here is protecting the water source, is that right?
That and keep the sedimentation off your neighbor as well.
Right, those, those two things. If you don't have a, if, if you don't have a water source that you're having to battle with, and the, on the problem is, you're just trying to keep something off your neighbor, right, or a neighbor.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and the, the other part I have, and I keep hearing this come up, are we really going to enforce this? Or, uh, I feel kind of like you do, you know, it, it's best for somebody to have a knowledge level, and let, let's do it by the academic side and not the law enforcement side. I, I think that's what I heard you say that a while ago. You know, I, I understand that. Um, the, the testing part, is there any way that you could change your testing site to accommodate the people from Natahala? Let's just say that, I believe I read there somewhere, December 31st, was that when the license ended?
It would expire, had to be renewed if this, you adopt this program, yeah.
That you could offer this, uh, test at the community center, firehouse, or something?
Continuing education, I think, was your, talking about, Mr. Hill.
Is, is continuing education, is that the, uh, the part where the end result is getting a license?
Uh, no, the test would be required to get the license, then continuing education on annual basis for renewal. And, and the reason that the planning board recommended, uh, uh, annual continuing education is because things change, laws change, and we, we feel that's the best, that's the best tool we have to inform the contractors of these changes is face-to-face discussion, rather than, rather than sending you an email.
I, I agree with you. Is there a way that the people, instead of having, from Natahala, instead of having to come here, that we could go there with the testing thing and have a designated time people are interested or wanting to do this, that we're going to be offering the testing?
That would certainly be possible if the commissioners want us to do that. There's locat...
Then they go to Highlands, Skating, Holly Ring.
Yeah.
Mobile testing.
All right, you go to your house if you want to.
I guess I was thinking more of the district, District 1, District 2, and District 3, that you take a testing unit, because District 2, opposite, it's here, District 3, they hit your Natahala area, and then District 1 be up there, have those three testing sites.
If, if, well, probably four. If the commissioners agree to this, I would probably recommend that you do that in Natahala and Franklin and Highlands, probably Skating.
And, and Skating, okay. Paul, is there something here?
One other question, uh, you and I have talked about this fast. We have a, when you pull a permit now, building permit, you pay per block, you pay land disturbing activity fee?
Yes, sir.
And I asked you in the meeting if those are all monitored, and you replied, no, and that the fee was used to administer that program?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what the income, the revenue, whatever, whatever you call it, from that land disturbing activity fee per year is collectively?
I can get you that.
Is that not a avenue we could use to maybe control if all this supposed sedimentation that we're having?
Not following this, Ted.
Well, why are we wanting, uh, what is the purpose of that fee?
That fee is set by this board of commissioners, and I assume it's for administrative costs. What happens to the money? We put it back into their deposit, and where it goes from there, honestly, couldn't tell you.
I think that came in in 2008, when everything was going, and we still have ways to get money, I guess, but, uh, I just...
Well, but, but getting back to your statement about monitoring the residential and, and commercial building permits, we do monitor those, because we have inspectors go out there all the time. It's the ones that are, that don't get all the monitoring, are the ones, like, somebody wants to, uh, build a driveway up here without building a house at this time.
Yeah.
And, and what we see is that not near water sources, nowhere the neighbors, he owns forty acres. Okay, we'll get there someday, sooner or later. And, and I agree, those are being neglected, but we, we kind of choose you about the ones we neglect.
So this is simply about controlling all, controlling all land disturbing activities on private property or commercial property?
Well, down here tonight is just about this license.
Yeah, but it ties together.
Uh, this is not going to change the sedimentation and erosion control ordinance, with the exception requiring you to have a license.
To do any land disturbing activity?
That is already a ordinance.
Thank you, Jack.
Yes.
Thank you, Jack.
And again, this was just a recommendation of the planning board, and this is the way things get done, is discussed. So, okay.
Do you entertain a motion?
Yeah, I was just making sure, all comments?
Are you claiming? You done?
Uh, that's all I've got.
You'll stand up?
I'm still standing.
Go ahead, Paul. You're the planning board.
Um, you know, as liaison to the planning board, I've been involved in this process, I'd like to think every step of the way. Pride to be the commissioner, I've served on that planning board, when we've, we've been through this process before. Um, and if there, if, if I thought for a half a second that this in any way had any impact whatsoever on personal property rights, I'd squat like a chicken. Um, you know, there's, we've, we've been through a building boom, uh, construction boom in Macon County. Uh, if, if you don't think that there was any issues for, for lack of regulations in, in construction during that time period, I, I would invite you to contact me later, and I'll take and show you some stuff that's left from 2005 to 2007 that Mother Earth hasn't fixed yet. So I think, I think that, that you've got to strike a line somewhere in the middle that makes sense for everybody. And the planning board, I think, did a great job going out of their way to seek opinions. They had no agenda, other than to seek out everyone that was involved, opinions on this, and, and what you see in front of you reflects those opinions. This, what we're talking about tonight, uh, is just a piece of the puzzle. A lot of the discussions that we've had are already contained in the existing ordinance, and we're not, we're not discussing it now. So we need to focus, in my opinion, I need to focus on this document and how it impacts what we're doing. You know, Paul brings up some great points, as he always does, and, and one that, that, that we should be concerned about is, you know, who, how's this going to be enforced? Has, has Jack got the personnel to do it? Et cetera. I think Jack has, has spoke to that, and, and I think we're covered for now. You know, as, as most folks believe our economy is building steam, and as hopefully more permits come in, Jack may need additional resources, but there's going to be additional revenue flow associated with that. So is it, is it going to be a self-sustaining program? I don't think that's a conversation that needs to take place tonight, regardless of this, this one document, because if we're going to look at that, we need to look at a whole bunch of county programs that are not self-sustaining. So, you know, I, I would, I would say that the planning board has done a good job striking some neutral ground that will protect the citizens of Macon County, but will not hamstring the citizens of Macon County. And, Mr. Chairman, based on that, I would make a motion that we approve of this as prohibited.
Have a motion on the floor?
Gentlemen, um, we're not in a position to adopt this language tonight. What, what we would need to do tonight would be to make a decision to move forward with preparing the requisite amendment to the ordinance. This, this is basically the bullet points for you. Uh, the actual amendment to the ordinance has not been prepared, awaiting for instructions from this board as to whether we wanted such an amendment to be prepared.
So what do you want the motion to say?
I think, I think the motion would be to just move forward with preparing a proposed amendment for consideration. I would make a motion. And I think also there will need to be an advertisement and a public hearing in connection with that.
Second. Any further discussion?
I, I tend to agree with Carl a lot. It's about education. I'm somewhat in the business, too, but I'm not seeing this as intimidating anyone's personal property rights. If you're going to do something major, uh, yeah, you need to have a little education going on. I think this is very minimal, and I think anyone that gets into large grading contests expectations needs to have a little knowledge of this. I don't have a problem proceeding forward with it. Any further discussion? All in favor, thinking about the same idea?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I got lost again. Are we kicking it down the road?
No. Basically, what we'll do now that we know that there is interest in moving forward with the planning board's recommendation, we'll take the formal action which is required in order to do so, which would include, first, they'll pay need for a public hearing, and second, the actual amended ordinance presented to you and, uh, for action. And we can do that at the January meeting, if that's the pleasure of the board.
So, Mr. President, his motion was, was not, your motion was to accept this, is that right or wrong?
He amended it.
It's amended, okay. I'm with you.
So you made the favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, four to one vote, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Kirk Field, David.
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, request for qualifications, RFQ, evaluation for architectural services at South Macon Elementary School, Mr. County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and glad to have Dr. Baldwin, Superintendent of Macon County School System, with us here tonight. Real quickly, it's included in your agenda packet, upon the request of this board, a request for qualifications was issued for the architectural services at the South Macon School Expansion Project. Three responding firms were evaluated by the school board using six selection criteria. As you'll see in your agenda packet, these firms were Novus, McMillan, and Cope. Novus received the highest scores during this evaluation from the school board, and consequently, uh, the school board will be recommending and voted to recommend last night at their meeting, Novus Architecture, to perform the architectural design services at the South Macon School Project. I would also like to add, uh, the responding firms were also evaluated by our county finance office using the same, uh, evaluation criteria that was used by the school board, and would like to, to say that the, the results, uh, that Lori and, and her staff came up with from the finance office and, and our evaluation, again, using this same criteria, would support the recommendation from the Macon County School Board to select Novus Architecture.
Board would need to find that Novus Architecture is the best qualified firm of those that presented, uh, proposed qualifications.
Need a motion on that?
Yes.
Make a motion, will it? Uh, take it as presented, and Novus.
Check. So a motion is second, further discussion?
Chris, did y'all have any more, I mean, the school board found that Novus to get this thing and keep it moving?
Yes, sir.
By statute, once you have found Novus to be best qualified, the statute would require the county to then begin contractual negotiations with Novus, try to come up with an acceptable contract between both sides. And so by implication, uh, county manager, I assume, would start that process.
Sounds good. I think that's reflected in Mr. Shill's motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to new business, update on the emergency communication project, emergency services direction, 4K. Warren, thank you for your patience in hanging out.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, the last time I did this presentation, it actually took about an hour, so we're not going to do that tonight. We're, we're going to do about five or seven minutes, and we're, we're going to keep the folder closed, and we're not going to get into weeds on some of the technical stuff. But I wanted to update you on where we're at on our project. Um, if most of you remember, very intelligently, we realized a couple of years ago that we're having problems with our emergency communication system, and we did the, the smart thing, we started setting some money aside last fiscal year to make some improvements to our system, because it's obviously very expensive when you start doing that. Uh, we set aside $400,000 into capital fund last fiscal year, and we also added another $400,000 for that, into that capital fund this fiscal year. So we came up with $800,000 to make some much-needed improvements to our emergency communication system. Um, a lot of things have changed since then, and that's, that actually kicked off a year and a half ago. Um, I want to tell you a little bit about what progress we have or have not made, and what the plans are, what we need to do in the future. Um, a couple of things have changed since then. If you probably remember, about a year ago, I came and asked for approval to apply for a FEMA grant, uh, to the team of about a million dollars, trying to leverage some of our monies. Uh, the thought with that was we would use the FEMA funds to buy the equipment, and we would use our money, the county money, to do some connectivity to build a, an IP-connected, probably UHF frequency communications network. Well, we found out in September, right around the 1st of October, that we did not receive the FEMA grant. Uh, there's also a couple of other things in play that we were trying to wait to see what was going to happen. Uh, North Carolina happened to be out of 50, the 32nd state to decide to sign on to the First Net, um, National Broadband Initiative for first responders. So we finally found out in October that North Carolina was going to do that. We're not sure where we're headed with that, but there's some potential there to, to solve some of our connectivity issues. So essentially tonight, what I'm going to tell you is, is what we think our plan needs to be. Um, one of the things, and, and through some fortunes or misfortunes, uh, last fire season, we had the opportunity to access what's called North Carolina Viper System, which is 800 megahertz system that's, that was initiated shortly after 2001, uh, which is a microwave-connected 800 megahertz system. Uh, it's owned by North Carolina. Uh, it was intended to be used by state and local and federal agencies for a communication system, so that individual entities didn't build a system here that worked by itself, and a system here that worked by itself, and a system here that worked by itself, and everybody spent a lot of money building a whole lot of different things that didn't work with each other. I was around when that started, and I was one of the, the people that was very adamantly against it. Uh, I was completely stubborn, and said, we were going to use that, it wasn't going to work here, and we're going to try it. Uh, well, last fire season, we, we've been noticing some improvements in the system. In the last fire season, we really had, we were forced to use that system to talk to some of these folks that came in here. Uh, and in the process, we were testing some other technologies to see what we were going to do with the system, and what we found was it worked really well. And had we just decided to open our minds and realize that the system's there, there's some things here we can use already. Um, we started looking at the, the UHF connected system, which is a trunk system, which I'll explain in just a minute, and, and we realized that without the FEMA money... in just a minute, and we realized that without the FEMA money, we would have very little chance of building a very significant connected UHF system, which is what we have now. And if we did, we would be putting equipment on essentially the same mountains that the Viper equipment's already sitting on, and we wouldn't have the ability to access some of the towers like they do that are outside Macon County boundaries, but actually serve our communities, for instance, Toxway, which is up in Cassers, Fry, Fry Mountain, which is over in Swain County, Chunky Gal in Cherokee County, and actually a little bit of Joanna and a little bit over in Graham County. So we went back and we looked again at where we were and what we needed and what we thought we needed to do for the future, and this is the plan we came up with. One of the things that we'll have to do for many, many years to come until technology catches up a little bit on the user end is we'll have to maintain what we call the legacy fire system we have now. It's an analog system. For technical folks, you understand the difference between analog and digital. The range of those frequencies is basically the same, but the analog frequency degrades a lot more significantly the closer you get to the end of that transmission range. Digital holds its quality better than drops off. They basically both end at the same place, but the perception is that the digital gives you better quality up to a point, and then it drops, kind of like your cellphone. A lot of times, you don't get scratchy anymore, you get signal, 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 and then it drops. But we have to maintain that analog system because most of our volunteer fire folks carry pages, and there's no good solution to page on digital frequencies at the moment. You can open talk groups, you can do some things with that, but it's not what really works well for Macon County at the moment, so we're gonna have to maintain the legacy system. So what we decided we need to do with that is we need to put some new equipment in there to increase the sensitivity on the legacy system, which is analog, but replace it with some repeaters on those mountains, the ones we have now, the mountaintops we're already servicing, with some digitally capable equipment, because you can put some equipment in now that wasn't available years ago that will recognize the communications equipment on the end user, whether they're using digital or analog. And essentially, what we would do is we develop a system where we have a fire frequency now, which is a dispatch frequency, and we have a tactical frequency. We would essentially take the tactical frequency and turn it immediately into digital system, and then we would take the fire system, which has our most wattage, maintain it for paging, increase the capabilities of the equipment on the mountains with some higher sensitivities and better antennas, and try and make the system better from the ground up, but give it some digital capabilities too, so that when the time comes and we have enough end users out there to do completely digital, we might can flip the switch on that when paging catches up to us. So we're trying to stay up a little bit ahead of the game, but be ready when technology changes. We also want to make sure that that equipment we put up there, even though we're not going into this to build a connected mesh network on the UHF system, to make sure that that capability is there to connect it. The FirstNet system, which is a broadband initiative from the national government for first responders, we don't yet know what North Carolina's plan's gonna be for that. We're hoping for some things that'll benefit us, but we also know that there's, I've been heavily involved with the broadband committee. I know that there's been a lot of planning, and that process is a lot like this process. You end up spending about a year and a half planning and about six months worth of really hard work. I know there's a lot of planning been in that process, and I'm really pleased with what I'm seeing from those folks, and I think what we're gonna see very soon is we're gonna see some options for some connectivity to these places that we may never have had before, and we just need to be ready to accept it. So before, when we were gonna go in and build the connectivity first with the microwave link and put the equipment in second, we're gonna flip that around, and we're gonna put the equipment in first and be ready for the connectivity when it comes to us. But with the same point, we need to offer some options to our folks that work in other areas. One of those options is to buy some channel space, for lack of a better term, on the Viper system. And the best way I can describe that system to you compared to what we have now, assume that you're going to a bank. The system we have now is PL-steered, you go to one place, and that's it. You go to a bank, and you have a bank teller for educators, you have a bank teller for builders, and you have a bank teller for landscapers, and there's three people that get in line that are landscapers. It doesn't matter that there's nobody in line for the builders and educators, you have to wait in line for your turn until you can finish with your teller. The Viper system is a trunk system. You have three bank tellers, and you have people that come up in line, and if you have three people that come in line, first person goes to you, second person goes to you, and the third person goes to you, and then you start over. So essentially, all you have to do is you're not assigned a frequency, you more efficiently use the bandwidth that you have, but you gotta make sure you have enough bank tellers to handle the crowd that you're expecting to come, and that's one of the things we'll talk about in this proposal that I'll talk to you in a minute about. With that being said, those are improvements to the existing sites we have. Now, we have some other issues, Nantahala folks. One of the communications problems we have is in Nantahala community. We've been looking at some solutions for them with broadband connectivity, how to get some repeaters into some places that are really hard to get to. One of the problems we found with some microwave shots or with some propagation studies is most everything, and they said it right when they were talking about that side of the mountain on Andrew's side, when you get into the gorge, there is no good way to bounce something back to Wine Springs Bald or Woyebald and get it back to Franklin. So you're gonna have to look at some out-of-the-box solutions to think how that's gonna work out. First solution we're gonna propose, and I'm gonna talk to you about dollar figures. We've got $800,000. We're gonna stay within budget, I promise you that. We're gonna spend about a third of that money on a Viper system on 800 megahertz end, we're gonna spend about a third of that on the UHF end, and we're gonna spend about a third of that upgrading subscriber units for the folks out here to get them started to actually use the technologies that are out there. Out of that third, we're gonna spend on the UHF system, in addition to bringing up the mountaintops we currently have, which is Wine Springs, which is Woyebald, Calley Bald, Satula, which is where we rode up in Highlands, Scaly Mountain, which is off of Hickory Nut Gap up in Scaly Mountain, and Dills Knob, which is up the gorge, up the Coliseum Gorge. We're gonna go to Wine Springs Bald. Remember, I talked to you about how we have that one teller right now for the bank system. We're gonna make one more teller for the Nantahala community on Wine Springs Bald, and we're gonna put some equipment in up there that right now where the antenna is throwing all of that signal all the way around us as far as we can possibly reach. We're gonna spend some money and do some directional antenna stuff on Wine Springs Bald to put that signal down into Nantahala, and we're gonna section it off, so instead of 360 degrees, we're gonna turn it down in a specific area to see what we do with those folks. And we're gonna run that for about six months, and we're gonna check those holes that we had before and see if we solved any of those holes. And then, once we have about six months of runtime on that to see what that downtilt and that directional stuff does for those folks, we budgeted about $40,000 to drop another tower site in Nantahala for those folks. We intend to spend about $55,000 just on equipment to serve that Nantahala community. Now, there's some other options that we actually even talked to Lisa about some options for some space down in the gorge somewhere, we've talked to some fiber folks. We have the option, even if we can't site a tower, to do some what we call community repeaters, that you can connect those through the broadband connection, or even, in some cases, a really good DSL connection, because they don't take much bandwidth, and you can get out into the nooks and crannies of those communities to make that connection, as long as the hardware we put on the mountains is able to do that, which is what we propose with this project. So we have a plan in place to address those issues in Nantahala. We also have a plan in place, we've already secured tower site and building from Georgia Power, a site down on Alex Mountain, which is actually inside the city limits of Sky Valley, Georgia, but that site will serve Scaly Mountain, Sky Valley, and Auto Community down toward the Waluwa Gap area down there to fix some holes that they have. So we'll spend about $15,000 on that one, because all the infrastructure's already there. With all that being said, there's a lot of pieces to that. UHF system will be our legacy system for a while. We think the change in digital's coming, all your technology's changing to digital. Todd and I were at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, our 911 trunks, there's a push from the North Carolina 911 Board that your 911 trunks won't be routed by copper anymore, they're gonna go to fiber. They're gonna be routed through fiber based on GPS porting instead of the old selective router system they have now. Your technologies are going to IP and digitally-based systems, and that's where we've got to head. But in the process of doing all that, and the UHF system is very doable, because a lot of the subscriber units, which are your portable radios and your mobile radios, are already compatible with that, you just have to reprogram them and tell them Fire Analog or Fire Digital. We also felt like we needed to give them access to a really good, high-quality system that honestly, we probably can afford, and that's the Viper system. Those sites are about a million dollars a site when you put those in, they spent about $189 million to build that system across North Carolina, the life count, I heard, but that's probably blew it up by now. But it's very robust. It takes the user interface out of the equipment, so your coverage improves, because you may not realize that I'm on Cal E, but Satula Mountain is the best shot I have at getting radio coverage, and it decides that for you. You don't have to do that, it's connected by a ring. One of my stubbornnesses, I guess for lack of a better term, is why I didn't buy into that before, was I didn't wanna give up control of the maintenance, and I wasn't sure what was gonna happen when one of those links in that microwave chain broke between us and Joanna Bald or something. The problem with the chain has been fixed. They have now ringed Macon County with those towers through Toxway, all the way back through Scaly Mountain, all the way down to the water tank on Georgia Road, on Addington Bridge there, all the way back to Fry, all the way back to Calley, all the way around. So if the link gets broken, the system is self-healing enough to find its way back around. And the maintenance, my original concern when we first started thinking about that was, what happens if it goes down? Who do I call? And what kind of concern am I gonna raise with somebody when I ring somebody and say it's broken? There are enough users on that system now, including some big-name alphabet folks like US Marshals, SBI, North Carolina Wildlife, State Highway Patrol, and your other local agencies now, that not only will they get the phone call from me, they're gonna get a phone call from a lot of folks, and Highway Patrol's entire digital network runs on this microwave hub now. So there will be some attention given when that thing doesn't go down. So our solution is to branch out into the Viper system, make that more acceptable to our folks here, ensure that there's enough channel space for us here in the future for talk groups for all the users in Macon County to access that if they want to, because we think that's gonna be the way of the future. Maintain the legacy system we have now, because we have to have it for paging, and improve what technology we have on the UHF side to bring it up to digital capability. Now, one of the things you're looking at me like, and I had to explain this to some other folks, you're looking at me like, why are you telling me we're gonna do three different things? Why are we doing analog, digital, why are we doing it? One of the things we've done over the last year and a half is we've looked at a lot of different counties, and a lot of different technologies, and a lot of different proposals that folks have done for emergency communication systems, and one of the things we've learned from all those folks, number one, is you can blow through $800,000 for a million, eight or 20 million in a hurry, if you're not careful. If you put all your eggs in one basket and you go with one technology, it may not be as good, it may not even be equal to the system that you have now. There's been a lot of failures across North Carolina where communications folks have went full bore into one technology and realized it didn't work. But one of the benefits of this plan is, we're branching out a little on the Viper system, we're getting a little bit out of our comfort zone, but we've been able to test it, because it's up and running, it's already there. All we had to do was get subscriber units and check on it. But it may not work for everybody. It may not work for some folks. Some departments will work really well, some of them it may have 95% coverage, some of them may have a little less, but it gives them that option, and if that's not working, we've always got the digital UHF system we're gonna put the technology into, and if that doesn't work for them either, we've still got the analog system we gotta have for the paging. So the worst day that you could possibly be, it won't be any better, it won't be any worse when we finish this project than what it is today, and we've only got one place to go, and that's that. So, with that being said, the other part of that equation, remember I told you there are three parts, we'd spend about a third of our money on the Viper system, about a third of our money on the UHF system, about a third of it on subscriber units. A lot of your agencies already have equipment that's capable. A lot of the fire departments, when they've talked to us, we've encouraged them over the last five years or so to invest in equipment that's digitally capable, a lot of them already have that, but in this figure, there's about $20,000 per department that we figured in that we can purchase subscriber units or portable and mobile radios for these folks. Our intent for the fire folks is get the technology ready, bring the vendors in, show them what's there, what's available for them, and let them pick out what technology and what equipment's gonna work for them, then we'll facilitate a group purchase for them, hopefully getting a little economic benefit out of that, and get them started on the right foot with that technology so they can get into digital. EMS will jump onto the 800-megahertz system, they already use it to talk to the hospital and love it. The only reason they don't use it for truck-to-dispatch or truck-to-truck is because the dispatch office doesn't have the capability to talk and tell on it. We've got, we have a very low-budget access into the Viper system. We have one consulate that that one dispatcher can use, and if that one's not at his or her station, somebody has to get up and come talk to him. We're gonna fix that with the new proposal we have. The sheriff, we've talked to Robbie, he's not here. The equipment that he's been installing is digitally capable, so again, basically, all you have to do is you have to, you can bring him up on the digital UHF frequency, reprogram his equipment, and he'll be good to go with that, and over the next period of five years or whatever he wants to do, if he doesn't find grant funding from somewhere, he can start integrating the Viper system into his cars if he wants to. The frequencies are already gonna be assigned, we've already got channels for fire, EMS, sheriff, we've even got channels that are earmarked for municipalities for the local PDs if they want to. They don't have to, but they'll certainly have access to it if they want. So, in a long story short, that's our proposed solution to fix our radio systems. We'd like to be 59s, we'd like to do 99.999% coverage, but I'm gonna be completely honest with you, in a topography of Macon County, that's probably not gonna happen. You're gonna have some holes somewhere, but I think this is a really good start to fix the holes that we have, and it gives us a good basis to build off of in the future. So, before I move on to my second part, does anybody have any questions about that?
What's the status, you remember, with Nantahala? It's been several years ago now, the fella got snake-bitten, and it all come, and that made a full circle to build a tower on Rainbow Springs that was gonna help facilitate the Nantahala. The tower's still standing empty today.
You're talking about the one right there, the pond on Rainbow Springs right there?
What's the status of that? Who owns the tower? Are they still paying a lease to the landowner? So who owns the tower, and can you use that tower?
I don't, I wasn't involved in the planning agreement for that. Any tower that has been brought online that I've been involved with, for instance, even the one on Windy Gap that just went in, in the planning process, we have reserved the right to put our equipment on those towers. That's part of the ordinance, that was part of the planning process the planning board brought about.
I don't know about that. On that tower?
I think that is correct.
And what makes sense about it, if it stays empty for so long, will it reverse to the county?
That I don't know.
But blow it up long enough?
I don't think it reverts to the county, but I do think there are consequences under the ordinance.
Because that would be a very huge tower.
For that particular part of the world, absolutely. Now, one of the things what we will need to figure out, we don't have the ability to test the UHF digital frequency. 800 is up here, and UHF is here, 800 doesn't have the ability to go through certain objects that UHF does, and then when you get into the VHF ranges, they're even better about going through stuff, which is lose some range. So, one of the things, we would certainly entertain that option, we would like to get the digital stuff running on Wine Springs and Calley Bald to see what that does with propagation, and then try and fill those holes in, but that's certainly something we could look at. Now, Nantahala, it's not gonna help you with shots in Nantahala, there's too much topography between there. And Nantahala, one of the benefits of me being involved with the broadband folks is trying to figure out this fiber connectivity. I was a microwave person, I wanted microwave connections, but microwaves are expensive. You're looking at $50,000-ish for a licensed, public safety, dedicated quality system on each end. You can get unlicensed and do cheaper stuff, but you run the rest of the interference in between. If we can pull off some connectivity and make Macon County more connected, it will benefit not only the end users, like the folks in the communities that use the internet on a regular basis, but your educators. We've already done the study with the school folks to figure out what our needs were with the education. We're getting ready to get the results back from a Region A study about what the general public thinks as far as the needs are, and then we already know which public safety needs are.
The subscriber units that the individual agencies will choose?
Yes. Yes.
Irregardless of which, what they choose, all of which will be digital capability.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Now, we will give them the option of different qualities of those, and, and one of the, when I say quality, when you start talking about eight-hundred megahertz, you're not talking about four-fifty megahertz, you're talking about two bands. And usually, one radio will do this band, and one radio will do this band. There are some technologies out there. You can buy one radio that's a dual-band that will do four-fifty and eight-hundred. They are a little bit more expensive, but your administrative folks, your chief officers, your, your higher-ups of the sheriff's office may need that capability, and then they can access both, because realistically, if I follow ICS principles, when I'm on scene running an incident, there should be one person talking to communications office, and that's it. Everything else should be handled internally. The second part of my proposal, and this is the big-money part of this proposal, is the proposal that you have in your, from your packet for the, the pricing of the seven-channel GTR eight-thousand Motorola radio system with the associated control, control stations for the dispatch office and all the associated hardware for our access into the Viper system. This is a one-and-done proposal. This is everything from, from the control stations to the cables, to the antennas, to everything in one bind. That's a significant chunk of money, but this is a one-and-done thing for the Viper system. We, we will have smaller parts. You, you can buy the parts a little bit at a time for the UHF system, because we've already got the infrastructure there. We may slip a repeater in here, and we may not need an antenna here, because we already replaced it. So, this is going to be your one big expense that we think we're going to have for this radio system. Now, I will tell you that it is Motorola. The system, Viper, what we're essentially doing is we're buying some channel space, we're putting some new radio equipment in, and we're buying some channel space on the microwave system, for lack of a better term to talk back and forth with. It is a Motorola system. You are pretty much stuck with putting Motorola equipment back in it. I have no problem with Motorola equipment, because it's very quality. But you can't go to another vendor and price, you can't put a Chevrolet transmission in a Ford truck. So you basically have to price the Motorola pricing. We'll tell you that this pricing was pursued, pursuant to the Houston-Galluston area council procurement system that Macon County is a member of. It's the group purchasing initiative that Macon County signed on with several years ago, that is equivalent essentially to the North Carolina state purchase and contract system. Chester and I have already looked at the proposal, and how the pricing is obtained, and, and I'm going to be frankly honest with you, you don't have much option. You, you go to Motorola, or you don't go at all. But we did go through the proper process to try and get the best pricing we could get from these folks through the HDAC folks, to make sure this proposal was good. This ensures us with, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, sixteen talk groups, that will allow us enough space for any of the people that are in Macon County, the emergency service agencies for years to come to access this system. And that wasn't me coming up with that, that wasn't him coming up with that. We, we sent that to the Motorola engineers, and they asked us a lot of questions on, how many users do you have, career, volunteer, who's here, how many sites, where's your volume going to be? And, and this comes from their engineers as far as telling us how much space we need on that system. So essentially tonight, I would, I would like to respectfully request that you approve this proposal from Motorola to do our foray into the, the Viper system as given in your package, quote number one thousand three oh four nine eight one two for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand two-hundred-and-three dollars as the first phase of our communication systems upgrade, with the second phase to kick off very shortly after January the first. This will be fully functional, we anticipate, by the first of April. This is about a ninety-day turnaround on this. So this system will be up and running very quickly. Subscriber units, we would love to have the day for the vendors to come in and have those in place in the hands of our end-users by July first. And the UHF system upgrade will be somewhere around, completed sometime by mid-spring to early summer. So this is, remember I told you before, we put about a year and a half into the planning and trying to figure where we're going with it, and then there's going to be six months of really hard work to pull this off.
All right, that was Warren's thirty-minute synopsis.
It's better than a hour.
I'm going to give you the, I'm going to give you the chairman's fifteen-second synopsis. This is our emergency services director's recommendation, who's been studying this for a long time, including having some assistance from some outside companies. There is no new money involved. This is our past few budget years that we've been putting away for this, and this is his recommendation. So, as liaison to his department, I think it's time we move forward with it, turn Warren loose to help approve our communications.
Let me, let me say one more thing. We were declined the FEMA grant. We were also given some information on why we were declined, and we actually have the ability to reapply this year. They haven't even opened the cycle yet, but our intent is to reapply again this year with a much less dollar figure to see if we can tax more equipment over the end of this. So we've already figured, out of the money that you've allocated us, we're already going to set aside enough of that money to cover that match if we were to be awarded that next cycle. But, we wouldn't know whether we got that money or not until this time next year, and we're not going to put all our eggs in that basket. We, we need to make some progress on the system.
We want a couple of questions. The design assumptions, under design assumptions, last two items.
Mm-hmm.
The power generators and PS.
Yes.
HBAC running electric, we're all good on all that, or?
Yes, sir. Those are already in sites that are managed by the Highway Patrol, which are North Carolina sites, and to be honest with you, their facilities are much higher quality than the ones we actually have.
Second thing, I think it's important, we, we deal with this day in and day out, to, to recognize Todd's warning that there are groups who are not looking at one technology. The world we live in today, we continually get pushed in the IP direction. We, we were told that analog, very simple, it's a devil, mess with it. But, in, in the area that we live in, that analog technology has, has got a lot of lag. And I think for y'all to, to recognize that, and have it a highly proposed, I think it's, I think it speaks very highly of the due diligence that you've done, and say thank you to both of you, and everybody involved in that.
Thank you. It hasn't been easy.
Mr. Lister, you going to put that in the motion? I'll second it. I'll, I'll make a motion if we approve, if we approve the proposal for two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand two-hundred-and-three dollars for the first phase of the radio system upgrade.
I second it. I motion I second it. Anything further? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Warren. Thanks, Warren. Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd.
Appreciate your twenty years. Twenty to twenty to go.
Twenty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty. All right. Almost done. New business, item B, changes to US Department of Transportation Drug and Alcohol Testing Regulation. Transit Director is Kim Angel.
You know, some people promised five to seven minutes, about thirty-five, forty minutes ago. And he only has two miles less to drive than I do going home, so you kind of wonder. Okay, first of all, let me apologize for sending the document so late with your packet yesterday. This is a regulatory change in the drug and alcohol testing regulations that were issued by USDOT. In January of, of this year, they decided that some changes needed to take place, and in November of this year, they finally made those effective. And then they said, well, they have to be effective January first. And they also need to be approved by your governing board. So, here I am. I'm going to actually hand you guys these, if you don't mind. So that I don't have to read to you all of the changes to the policy. You, you do have a copy of the policy. The biggest one I want to point out is that in the, in the testing panels, there are, is it, on the second page of what I just handed you, where the summary actually begins. So this is a summary of, of the changes that are in the policy. So number one, under modification of drug testing panel, basically what has happened is, they have realized there's an opioid crisis in this country, and apparently there's some people who are pilots and transit drivers and Coast Guard members that, that may have problems with prescriptions. So now they will be testing for new opioids. And you can see those listed. The second thing are just some definitions, some cleanup. There are a couple of things as far as the collection process goes that will affect our process centers, the health department. I did have a conversation with Misty in the, in the lab earlier today. I sent these over to her. I don't think she had been made aware of these yet, but she certainly is now, and I, I'll certainly follow up with her on those. And then there are some other regulatory changes, again, prohibition of use of federal branding. There were, there's a site where all the service agents, which means our substance abuse professional, our collection site, all need to be registered to get notices of changes. Okay. So that being said, I did send you the, a copy of the policy. I did make a change or two to it today, but it was only cosmetic. I added a, a nice little cover page to it. The wording inside is basically a template that we were given. What I did include is, Macon County has a post-accident policy that is different than what's required under the Federal Transit Administration or under the, the USDOT regulations. So, that has been included in this. It is exactly like our last policy with the, with the updates. One thing I do want to point out, and I did talk to Mr. Jones earlier today, if you'll go to attachment A, and this was one of the, the changes that I made, that lists the covered classifications. Now, when we're talking about a drug and alcohol testing policy, this policy only applies to safety-sensitive employees who fall under the testing requirements. So for that, so we have to list the employees. All of the transit employees fall under this testing policy, and the garage employees fall under this, because they work on our vehicles. So they, all of the transit employees, full-time and part-time, and all of the garage employees are in our pool.
What I find is that...
What is that?
Is that the only test they'll accept is urine.
Is a urine test. And that, the only exception to that is we can't accept a law enforcement test, whatever they use, if there's a, a reason that we can't test within that thirty-two hours, if they're hospitalized, it's about anything.
Most businesses, and, you know, even, even, even the state is using the high bottle for swabbing.
No, no hair, nothing. And they, and they made that very specific in this policy.
It's been proven it's just as accurate and, and a lot cheaper.
It was out for eleven months, and based on the, the comments they received, apparently that was something that, that the, they decided to clarify, and it was made very clear to us, that only urine...
It's much easier to manipulate a test with urine than any other device.
It is the DLT.
It, it, it is, you know, and we have to, actually, as a sub-recipient, it is my responsibility to make sure that our collection site follows those, and, and to do a mock collection every so often, to make sure they're following the process. They have to. So it's very interesting.
I was going to ask Chester if he had anything using favor of it. I think this is one of those situations where if you're going to continue to take money for the transportation program, if you're going to do this, I would add one additional thing. The county is in the process of working with East Coast Risk Management for a comprehensive, I might not be saying the term, or this, so the employee handbook.
Yes, sir.
Is the, which will effectively, if adopted, take the place of your current personnel policy. I think it would be appropriate, if the board were to pass this tonight, to pass along a copy of this to Renee at East Coast Risk Management, to see whether or not it should be worked into that policy, so that all of those are in the same place.
Does Chris, do you see any liability issues? I mean, because anytime you have a group that's tested, and you have some positives, they're going to say, well, no, that's the wrong test. And so, that money that we're going to have to spend to defend that test comes from us, correct?
It, it is going to come from us, but I, you know, I think basically, where are those tests sent to? Are they through lab courts?
No, they are. It's in here. It's actually back here. We have a, a third-party administrator out of Charlotte. So the, the, it, it goes to Charlotte first, and if it requires a split specimen, because there, every test has a split specimen that goes. So if there is any failure with the first specimen, or employee comes back and says, no, that, that wasn't true, it goes to a lab in Kansas.
Theoretically, you could have a requirement of bringing somebody from Charlotte and from Kansas, should you get in a litigation situation. However, I will tell you that the typical attorney handling that litigation is likely to, by way of discovery, issue a request for admission, that that test is accurate. The effect of that, if it is denied, shifts the cost of bringing the expert witness in to prove the positive test.
And typically, and it goes back to, especially when you start adding, when you're talking about the opioids that, that they're adding, you're talking about very commonly prescribed pain medications. You're talking about the Norco, the Vicodin, Oxycontin, Oxycodone, and Lor tabs. So the, the education process for, especially for my employees who, who this will affect, is, it's fine for you to take those as long as they are prescribed, and you're taking them as they are prescribed. Yes, it will show in that specimen, most likely is a positive result. The MRO will then contact that employee. They're going to have five days to get with their doctor's office to prove that they are using that, that particular prescription legally. You know, I think you run into more legal issues with, with prescription. You know, if they, they show marijuana or anything else that's of the illegal nature, it's going to be a lot more difficult for them to prove that, hey, I really wasn't doing something I wasn't, I wasn't supposed to.
In other words, you don't have no choice. Can we go the other way?
We have absolutely zero choice, as long as we want to take federal money.
Just take a motion. Mr. Chairman, before, before you do that, I would point out, I have not seen the proposed handbook that's coming from East Coast Risk Management. There may or may not be something dealing with this. I think it's important that any motions may be, be clear that this policy applies to transportation, for all transportation department employees and garage employees, and will apply and indeed preempt any other county policies to the contrary.
Yeah. Because it replaces one that I just brought in February of 2016.
All right, let's get that motion. How many, how many drug, do you test for now? Ten?
There is, there are five. The panel is five. So it's, it's marijuana, amphetamines, diciclotines, cocaine, and the opioids. Which falls under, yeah.
Most to approve is Presini.
Chester's comments.
Chester's comments on what that does to, and I have, if we had that meeting in Raleigh, and that is, just because... And I'd have it if we had that meeting in Raleigh and that is, just because every, every county dealing with things like that.
Second. Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we, you know where this comes from?
Warren just wanted to see what five minutes really looked like, that's why.
Lease agreement between Macon County and Southwestern Community College regarding the existing burn building property.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we have here is the lease for the existing burn building property. This was a twenty-year lease that was entered into back in nineteen ninety-eight between Macon County and Southwestern Community College, where they would have access, uh, to lease this property from us to conduct their fire training operations. In saying that, it was a twenty-year lease and this lease will expire on January thirty-first of twenty eighteen. Um, as, as we all know, we're, um, in discussions right now for a new location for a fire training facility. However, I just wanted to put this in the agenda to bring it to your attention and perhaps to discuss, if it be the desire of the board, some terms, um, for, for drafting or, or entering into another lease agreement to finish out the, uh, the life of the burn building where it currently exists.
At that time, the, the lease will be null and void and no longer ceases to go burn building, revert back to county grant.
Yes.
Do you have to specify an additional time then for this building?
I think probably what would be appropriate in this situation is for us to, uh, try to guesstimate the length of the project for the new burn building. Go ahead and do a new lease for that period of time or maybe a little additional. But with the understanding, uh, and, and this is what I would encourage is a provision that would allow the, uh, county or the, uh, Community College SEC to end the lease on a certain amount of notice without legal consequence. You know, obviously, I don't, I don't think we, we need to get SEC to, uh, to weigh in on that as to what they think reasonable notice would be. I don't know if, if, for example, if they have classes during a semester, obviously you don't want to, uh, end the lease in the middle of the semester, so. But it, but the idea would be is to have a lease long enough for that building to continue to be used if it's appropriate to use it, until the new burn building will be completed.
Would five years be appropriate or is that too long?
I think it is, provided there is a provision in there that would basically say, you know, that the county would be able to terminate it, you know, once it has completed a new burn building or upon X number of days' notice to SEC.
It's better to have it out there long than too short.
We, otherwise you're going to be coming back in here and doing it another way.
There's a provision in here that, that, uh, allows us to cancel by giving fifteen days' notice. So we can maybe look at that, maybe.
Yeah, we need to look at it and, and probably need to talk with, uh, Dr. Thomas about what sort of notice they need today as opposed to when that was first constructed twenty years ago.
So with the boards, with the,
We could have a proposal for the board.
Consensus of the board, we'll bring a proposal back in January.
Pork it out and let it smell.
Yes, sir.
Consent agenda, any motion to approve or some, something, an item that's a little like a man?
The D, I just don't understand. I didn't hear the, D, tax reconsidering. Might have went there.
Mr. Frazier, go in on for that one.
I did, I did. As soon as it's, the consideration, a request of tax for, in the amount of a thousand eighty-five dollar per tax to show Rich Light refund is not recommended, which is requested refund, a law is so rated and not presented to tax office still number fifteen two thousand seventeen. Thus, should be denied under state statute one oh five two eighty-seven C. Changes only effective the following January. Pause is in question.
And that is just, uh, the refund that was requested that the tax off, the tax administrator would not be recommended uh, because it's denied under the general statutes.
General statute that?
One oh five two eighty-seven C. You are doing it by approving the consent.
Yeah, th- this is a request that, uh, is being made to the Board of Commissioners. Only the commissioners can, uh, grant the, the action being requested.
So we are going, we're going to go against the recommendation of Mr. Light.
No, you're approving his request not to refund by approving the consent.
You got a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent to this president.
You got a motion with a second? I'll say. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, do we have appointments, uh, community funding pool, which is Robert Eastman?
A community funding pool would be Karen Stiawinner for the Community Foundation.
Motion to approve, Mr. Allen.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Could, uh, have a brief closed session?
Go ahead and, close session.
Preserve the attorney's right.
Any action following?
I do not believe so.
Then we will be adjourning until January.
Next year.
Next year.
See you next year.